Okay, everyone, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Berkeley County Board of Education to order. This is Wednesday, January 27, 2021. It's about 6:08 PM in the evening. And I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight. We're still trying to get people online so that we can visit them virtually. Dave Kenny and Elaine will continue to see if we can get that accomplished. Item number two on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Jason Barrett, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
Sure, absolutely.
Great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America.
To the republic.
Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason.
Sure.
So, welcome, everyone. This is our second legislative meeting. We had one last year. I thought it was very productive, and we hope tonight will be productive as well. I'd like to have everyone introduce themselves. We're still missing some people, Elaine.
I see Ken is in. I believe everyone is here that had responded.
Ken Reed, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Great, very good, sir. How about Don Forst?
Oh, I don't think Don's made it in. Maybe Sharon can continue to work with him through email.
Okay, cool. I need to approve the agenda, so is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Removed.
I can.
Motion by Dr. Gilpin, a second by Todd Beckwith is to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It carries unanimously. We have some new folks tonight that are with us, and I would like to start by having everyone introduce themselves so that we know who is who. So I'll start. I want the board to introduce themselves, the superintendent, the senior staff that's present, and then each one of the legislators. If you would do that, I would appreciate it. So my name is Bill Queen. I'm the president's board. I've been on the board for, this is my 25th year, and I just appreciate everyone being here tonight. So Darren?
Darren Gilpin, I'm vice president of the board. This is, I guess, coming up on my 11th year on the board.
Todd?
Evening all, I'm Todd Beckwith. I'm in my 27th year of school board service. As I tell people, I'm the senior member in terms of years of service, but not of age.
Pat Murphy. I don't know how many years.
How about 14?
I'll take.
Good, good. We have a new member of our board. I'd like to introduce everyone, Michael Martin. Michael, would you introduce yourself and tell us how long you've been around?
Yeah, like Dr. Queen said, I'm Michael Martin, the young gun on the board, and it's six, seven months now, and enjoying every second of it.
Welcome, sir. Superintendent Murphy?
Thank you, Dr. Queen, and good evening, and thank you legislators for joining us. I'm Pat Murphy, and I am here starting my second year serving as superintendent and enjoying it as Michael is. It's a new experience and becoming reacclimated with the community, and I think there's a lot of positive things that are happening here in the eastern panhandle as well as in Berkeley County. I'm going to introduce Don Dillinger, and then if we could just pass the baton as you pass it along to other senior staff members to cue them. So, Don?
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. I'm Don Dillinger, deputy superintendent of schools. I work basically with curriculum and instruction and focus on the secondary level of curriculum instruction. And I've been working with Berkeley County Schools for 43 years. Have been a part of Berkeley County Schools much longer than that, but have started my teaching career 43 years ago. Dr. Schooly?
Good evening, I'm Justin Schooly. I'm the assistant superintendent of human resources. I've been with Berkeley County Schools now for 20 years. I'm working within the People's Services Society and HR during that time. So I'll pass it along to our treasurer.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jim Butts. I'm the treasurer for the Berkeley County Board as a former student here in the system, but I've been working as the treasurer for wrapping up my 10th year now. And from that, I'll pass on to Mr. Dilly.
Yes, I'm David Dilly. I'm assistant superintendent over special education. This is my second year in Berkeley County and have been enjoying being here a part of the Berkeley County crew. And I'd like to pass this on over to Vernic Walker.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Vernic Walker, and I'm the associate superintendent for equity and inclusion. This is my 14th year at the district level, and prior to that, I was school counselors in Berkeley and Jefferson County counties. And I will turn this over to Elaine Bobo.
I'm sorry, did you say my name?
I did.
I'm sorry, I got a couple phones ringing at one time. I'm Elaine Bobo. I am also a graduate of Berkeley County Schools, as are my children and grandchildren, and my daughter is an educator. I am the director of communications, and we have a two-person shop. And I'm glad to see all of you guys here this evening. Thank you for joining us.
Sharon, are you there? How about Dave Kenny?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Queen. I am Dave Kenny. I'm director of information technology for schools. 1970 graduate of Pedgesville High School and been with the system for many, many years. I'm probably the old guy on screen, except for maybe Dr. Queen tonight. Thank you.
We have anyone else out there from senior staff that everyone?
Brad, we need Brad.
Brad Spanagel.
Yeah, okay.
I am Brad Spanagel. I'm the assistant treasurer for Berkeley County Schools in my 15th year. I'm also a board member for the West Virginia ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials. Graduate of Martinsburg High School, married to a teacher, wonderful teacher, the former 2014 West Virginia State Teacher of the Year.
Very good, good. All right, if the legislators would introduce themselves. Craig Blair, if you'd get us started, I would appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, Bill. Craig Blair, I represent the 15th senatorial district, which is Berkeley County, Morgan County, Hampshire County, and part of Merrill County. Patricia?
Sorry, my mute button changed location. Patricia Rucker, state senator in the 16th district. I am the junior senator from that district. I share that district with Senator Unger, and that is all of Jefferson County and the part of Berkeley that Senator Craig Blair and Senator Charles Trump don't have. I'm also senate education chair.
John Unger, are you there?
Yeah, I'm John Unger. I'm a graduate of Berkeley County Schools and a state senator of the 16th central district for the last 22 years.
How about Charlie Trump?
He was not able to join us this evening. He had a conference.
Okay. Jason Barrett?
Thanks, Bill. I'm Jason Barrett. I represent the 61st district in the House of Delegates, which is made up primarily of the city of Martinsburg.
Ken Reed?
Yeah, my name is Ken Reed. I represent the 59th district, which is part of Berkeley and part of Morgan.
Great, thank you, sir. Welcome. Don Forst? Did I see Dave Horst there, too?
Charles Horst. Yeah.
Charles Horst, yeah.
Yep, I'm Charles Hurst, delegate for the 62nd district, which is northern Berkeley County, generally from the edge of Martinsburg to the Maryland line there along the 81 Rad 11 corridor.
Great, thank you, Charles. Anyone else?
Don Hardy.
Don Hardy, I think you're out there, sir.
Yes, I'm Delegate Hardy from the 63rd district.
Very good. Is there anyone else that we have missed? Well, welcome, everyone. We really do appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us tonight. This is a very important gathering of all of us at this time before the session starts, and we hope we can have some impact on things that happen in the senate and the house in this upcoming session. So again, thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. We hope 2021 will be better than 2020. It's been a tough year, but again, thank you for being here. Dr. Murphy, would you like to start us off?
Absolutely. Thank you again, Dr. Queen. I'm going to start by sharing my screen, and I believe all of you received these materials earlier today. So hopefully, you've either been able to take a quick look at them or become familiar with them as we go through the presentation. I'm going to ask Dr. Schooly, Jim Butts, and Brad Spanagel, they're going to assist me with the presentation this evening as we kind of break it down into different pieces. All right. And Dave Kenny, your utility is going to be, oh, okay. So we've got two main objectives that we want to talk with you about tonight and how we see, you know, just giving you some additional information and background about these two objectives could be helpful for you and for us in the upcoming session. Coupled with that, we also recognize that Berkeley County and the eastern panel handle is unique to the rest of the rest of the state and how we can perhaps consider, you know, the factor of growth and the economic engine that the eastern panhandle is and how it differs from the rest of the state with some of your thinking. This is just a quick snapshot. I know we have some new members of the legislation that are new to us, and I'll just touch on some of these. Parts of these are just in relationship to how we look or what comprises Berkeley County Schools. We have over 32 educational sites. You can see that we employ close to 3,000 employees. We also are 322 square miles, and there are over 30 languages that are spoke here in the district. Coupled with that, you can see that we have a pretty aggressive meals program as far as the average number of meals that we serve, and that has only increased here recently with the pandemic. Also, the number of scholarships that are awarded here to our graduates, most recently in the class of 2020, over $12 million. And then also our graduation rate. So we're very proud of some of the things that we're doing, our staff achieve, and the contribution that public education is making here to Berkeley County and the eastern panhandle. We also look at this in relationship to what we see as some of the economic indicators that are driving this region. We're sandwiched here between Virginia and Maryland. We're influenced by those jurisdictions to our north, south, and east, but we're also driven to a large extent with what's happening in our state. So population growth, as you'll see with some of the information I'm going to share with you, continues to drive this area. It is also seen as an economic engine, but different from other parts of the state. We also see employment growth with some of the industry and businesses that are coming here. And as a consequence, we're also seeing that happen with student enrollment in our projections and then housing forecasts. So that's kind of a quick overview, but let's take a little bit closer look at what's transpired here over, you know, some recent years. So as far as looking at student enrollment and we go back here to 2001, you can see a pretty consistent trend line from 2001 through 2019. There was a slight drop off, and we are attributing that to, you know, a couple of things that we've seen in tracking that. I think most significantly, for whatever reason, our pre-K enrollment is slightly off this year and down, but we'll continue to look at that. I think Berkeley County has done a very nice job, and I want to recognize the staff for the changes that have been relatively slight in comparison to our state and our region with how enrollment has changed. Coupled with that, this just gives you two viewpoints. The first, over the past 10 years, about what's happening in the state as far as public school enrollment in these counties. And as you can see from this particular chart, over the past 10 years through last year, Berkeley County was one of the three counties that were growing of the 55 counties. Recognizing this year is a little bit of a different anomaly. You can see that that growth has changed ever so slightly, and basically, the difference between the last chart and this chart is approximately 400 students. So we're attributing again the drop off this year for what's happened, but you can also see what's happening around the state as regards to student enrollment. So the good news is for us, especially here in the Berkeley County areas, we are continuing to grow. This is some housing data that we got from Berkeley County Government, and as evidenced with the student enrollment, along with housing starts, we see, you know, from 2016 through 2020, those housing starts only continuing to move forward. That's the information and the message we continue to get from the county government as far as how developers are still looking in this region for possible growth and how housing starts have continued to be steady, but not only steady, but gradually, you know, continuing to expand. So as we look at, you know, our first objective and recognize the importance of our staff, not only instructional, professional, but also service in how we serve the academic needs of our students, their social, emotional well-being and nutritional needs. We see that our objective here is recruiting, retaining, and developing professionals and service personnel as we see us being a growing and expanding school district. Right now, Berkeley County is the second largest school district in the state, and it's anticipated or projected that we will eventually eclipse and be the largest school district here in the next several years. So what we've done is, and Jim Butts and Brad Spanagel and Dr. Schooly will speak to this. What we've offered here is some possible legislative actions that you folks may want to consider. And by taking those actions, they offer, we're going to also offer along with that solutions that we see that could be beneficial not only to our county, but also counties in the state. I always say to my staff, it's great to bring, you know, problems or recommendations to the table, but then what ultimately is the solution? So we'd like to take it a little bit of a step further in, you know, providing you with what those solutions could be and what actions you may want to consider. And I would look at these different solutions as a menu of different possibilities that we'd like for you to, you know, encourage you to think about as you head toward Charleston. So, Mr. Butts, I'll turn to you, sir, for the first solution.
All right, thank you, Dr. Murphy. Are you going to drive the slides to the next one?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So again, welcome for this evening. For those of you that were here last year, this is one area we did talk about last year. It hasn't been addressed through the legislative process, and therefore, that issue still exists with us today. As you see over the last four years, our special education expense has gone up to almost $11 million in the last four-year span. We went from 35.8 million to 46.7 in 2020. And again, that typically would have been a little bit higher, but given the COVID, some of those expenses weren't realized. So we still had an increase over 2019 to 20, and again, over a four-year span, that's almost $11 million. So special ed still is an area for us to address. If you want to hit the next slide, please. So while we spend $46 million a year, the funding source for that mostly comes out of our local funds. So as you can see in this slide, 45% of our spending on special ed is all from local money. We get about 19 to 20% out of the federal programs through IDEA, and the other 34% comes from the state funding. So one of the things we're asking you guys to do is take a look at the state aid formula for both the step one and step two, which is the staffing for employment. If you hit the next slide, please. This is hard to see, but I know it's in your packet. This is the upcoming 2022 budget. As you can see on the third column from the left at the very bottom, there's 2,160 positions employed in the state of West Virginia above the state aid formula. When you look at that, 51 of the 55 counties are overstaffed on this side of the chart. Now, not in your chart, it's the professional side. We'll talk about it, too. It's not quite as bad. It's only 47 out of 55 counties that are overstaffed. So clearly, we have a gap in what we need to provide and where it comes from. Now, when we're talking about staffing, you know, obviously, in the state aid, K through six has ratios. We have certain classroom sizes we have to maintain. Special ed also has ratios, and in the policy 2419, some of those ratios, depending on your level of service that is required in special ed, can be as low as one adult to six students. The problem with that is the state aid funding formula does not fund at that level. The state aid formula and the professional staff for instructional is 66 per thousand, which is roughly about 15 students per classroom. So when you got one side where you're funding at 1 to 15 ratio, and then you got policy 2419, that might be a 1 to 6 requirement of class size. So what that forces the counties to do across the state is to use the secondary classrooms for the general ed to pull those sources of staff. Obviously, we have limited budgets, and there's only so much we can do, and given the way the state aid formula is written, the way the special ed policies are written, that's the area that has the least amount of areas where we can actually pull teachers from. So it ends up hurting the general population in the secondary classrooms. If you hit the next slide, please. So as Dr. Murphy said, you know, we do want to provide solutions, and one of those solutions to the problem is the enrollment. We know across the state for the last several years, there's been a decline in enrollment across the entire state. This reflects back from 2013, so we've lost about 29,000 students over the last several years. And with that, based upon the average per pupil services that state aid provides, that's about $126 million. What we're asking is to consider using those lost state aid funding from the reduced enrollment to support changing the state aid formula for the professional service. And if Dr. Murphy, if you can give me a control of the screen for a minute, I'll pull up one of the documents.
I'm going to have to stop sharing, Jim, and then I'll.
All right, I'm not sure if you guys can see this or not, but you should be looking at what we're proposing when the special education staffing ratios. This packet is also in your packet that was provided to you. The top is the step one, is the professional ratios. The first column in the middle is what we currently are for regular education. That's the current staffing levels, depending on you're a high, low, or sparse area. The column to the right is what we're proposing to at least consider changing West Virginia code for a staffing formula for the special ed side for the professionals. And then below that, we're talking about step two, which is the service personnel side. And again, the first column of that chart is how the counties are currently funded, depending on if you're a low, medium, or high-density district. And then to the right is what we are proposing to make some legislative considerations for, to adjust those personnel ratios to help us have some additional staff support in the classrooms. By providing these changes, it will allow us to not only staff the special ed classrooms to the policy 2419 requirements, but it also allows to put the classroom teachers back into the general ed and the secondary classes. And I think, Dr. Murphy, that's all I had on that section. Were there any questions? I know that's a lot of information. I'm sure some of you guys have seen this before. We were actually looking earlier today at the state budget, and it wasn't just a few years ago that the state was providing about $90 million more dollars per year to the education system of West Virginia. So while that number's gone up and down over the last several years, it has changed quite significantly in the last couple. And what we're asking for is that funding dollars to stay in the Department of Education realm and not be swept back to other state agencies.
So I know we have a couple of topics this evening that are, you know, may require just stopping and seeing if there's any questions and giving Mr. Butts or members of our team, you know, time to respond, or if we want to move on, we can do that as well. But I'm going to stop there just for a minute and see if there are any questions. All right, we'll then go on to item number two, and I'm going to ask Brad Spanagel to talk about the 1984 supplement here. Brad?
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Can you allow me a screen share?
All right, it's all you.
Okay, you should be seeing a chart on your screen that says Berkeley County Board of Education Professional Personnel Salary Schedule across the top. Do you see that? Okay, this evening, I'm going to talk about the 1984 county supplement, and I'm going to give a very broad overview because you can really get lost in the history behind it. So I'm going to actually start with a very short history lesson, and I'm going to follow it up with a detailed example to try and help our listeners gain a better understanding of state equity and ultimately how the 1984 county supplement ties in. So we're going to start by taking a little trip back in time. There was a West Virginia court case in 1982, often referred to as the RECT decision. And that ruled that the state's funding system caused financial inequities from county to county. Basically, small counties argued that their lack of tax base and their inability to pass excess levies created an educational inequity because teachers were transferring to neighboring counties for higher pay, something we know a lot about here in Berkeley County. So in an attempt to amend these funding inequities, the West Virginia Legislature passed a law in 1984 that actually reduces state funding for counties that had an excess levy in 1984. So the chart I'm presenting this evening represents a present-day comparison between Berkeley County Schools, which is the top half of our chart, and the 17 West Virginia school districts throughout the state that either did not have an excess levy in 1984 or lost an excess levy over the past 36 years, and they're at the bottom part of the chart. The chart also represents a small carve-out of the teacher's professional salary scale on a bachelor's degree. That's what the little A B means in the middle of the screen, along with years of experience, and it runs from zero to five. Now, to explain this or give you an example, you have to kind of read the chart backwards. You have to read from right to left. So we're going to start over here in this column labeled C plus F, total salary. If you look at our bachelor's degree, zero years, and come across the chart, you're going to see this. If you look at our bachelor's degree, zero years, and come across the chart, you're gonna see this number thirty nine thousand six twenty eight. That's what we pay a beginning teacher, basically a teacher right out of college. If you come down to the chart below for our county that doesn't have an excess levy or didn't have an excess levy in nineteen eighty four, bachelor degree, zero years, you see they pay thirty six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. The difference is two thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars, roughly seven percent. Why two thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars? Well, our excess levy here in Berkeley has grown over the past thirty six years, and that's the amount we've been able to allocate to this level in our salary scale. Now, let's move further across the chart here to column C called Total State Support. And again, if you look at a bachelor's degree, zero years, you can see Berkeley County, from the state of West Virginia, receives thirty four thousand nine hundred and eighty five dollars for a beginning teacher. But watch what happens when we go to the chart below for the county that didn't have an excess levy in nineteen eighty four. We look at bachelor's degree, zero years, total state support, thirty six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. So the county without the excess levy is receiving one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars more than Berkeley County Schools. Why? Again, well, it's because of the nineteen eighty four county supplement. We had an excess levy in nineteen eighty four, and our excess levy allocated one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars to a bachelor's degree in zero years. And because of the ruling, the state reduced our state funding by the amount we were paying out of our excess levy. So even today, because we had our excess levy in eighty four, we received less money than a county that didn't have an excess levy. And we're only able to pay approximately seven percent more than these other counties. Now, some people may look at that and go, well, seven percent more, that does try to keep things a little bit equitable. Well, maybe in the nineteen eighties that was equitable. But we know thirty six years later, in the year twenty twenty one, that there is a big cost of living differential between counties. So let's move on to our second chart. And everyone should be seeing a chart labeled Cost of Living Comparison for all West, all fifty five West Virginia counties. Can you guys see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so on the left side of the screen, we have all fifty five counties listed. On the far right column, we have the overall cost of living index. And this is the cost of living index against the national average. Again, the national average would be one hundred percent. So if you see Jefferson County at one oh seven point two, that means Jefferson County's cost of living is seven point two percent above the national average. Now, if you currently live in Jefferson, Berkeley, or Morgan County, this chart should not surprise you because three of the four most expensive counties living in this state are right here in the eastern panhandle. And I want to draw everyone's attention to the various categories that make up our overall cost of living. And the first one I want to talk about, the main one I want to focus on is housing. If you look at housing, Berkeley County comes in at seventy nine point three percent of the national average. As you move down the chart, you notice these percentages drop pretty quickly until once you get past Grant County, everybody's under fifty percent. And as you move even further down the chart, you get all the way down, one up from the bottom here. Let's look at Webster County, twenty six point seven percent. And I'm picking Webster County intentionally because I know Webster County does not have an excess levy, they didn't have one in nineteen eighty four. Webster County, twenty six point seven percent. That means Berkeley County, Berkeley County teachers and taxpayers, people who live in Berkeley County, pay fifty two percent more for housing than they do in Webster County. But let's go back to our salary chart. We're only able to pay seven percent more, yet the housing is fifty two percent more in Berkeley County. And we can go through each metric on our cost of living chart. We can go through goods and services, groceries, healthcare, transportation, utilities. And you can see Berkeley is higher than just about every other county with the exception of Jefferson across the page. And when you get to the final overall cost of living, Berkeley comes in at ninety two point seven, but you have counties like Webster at seventy two point seven. You know, that's a pretty big gap, that's a twenty percent differential. But again, because of the nineteen eighty four county supplement, we're only able to pay our teachers about seven percent more. So this nineteen eighty four supplement, which was intended to create equity among counties, thirty six years later, is creating inequity among counties. And that's the point we want to drive home tonight. So if we decide we want to get rid of this nineteen eighty four county supplement, the next question's gonna be, what does it cost? It's gonna be a big ticket item, right? Well, luckily, our friends in Nicholas County, West Virginia, came up with a chart. They went through all fifty five counties and looked at the local contribution by county towards the salary scale. And you can see, you should be looking at a chart right now that says state minimum salary scale, county contributions towards equity. The second one down is Berkeley, and you can see we contribute approximately three point seven million dollars towards our salary scale annually. As you come down this chart, you get to the very bottom where the total is. To get rid of the eighty four supplement, it's gonna cost about forty six million dollars, and that's a big number. But again, you don't have to get rid of the eighty four supplement in one shot. You don't have to do it in one year. It's something you could phase out. And Mr. Butts just spoke about declining student enrollment in the state of West Virginia. As student enrollment declines, the state's contribution towards public education declines. And if we tried to keep those dollars in public education, you could start to roll back the eighty four county supplement a little bit, year after year after year. And the last point I want to make about this nineteen eighty four supplement and this forty six million dollars, and I know we have a lot of new people here in the legislature, this is a liability to our state legislature. And think about it, think about it like this. If every excess levy in the state of West Virginia failed tomorrow, you guys are on the hook for this forty six million dollars. So every time an excess levy comes up for boat, boat, no matter what district you represent in the state of West Virginia, you have to be holding your breath because if the excess levy fails, you can come to this chart and find out what number is gonna get added to the state budget at the end of the year. This is a liability. And to be honest, I really think the state legislature should look at getting this liability off the books. Don't let it hang out there. Again, you don't have to get rid of it all in one shot. We can roll it back a little bit at a time. That's my presentation. Does anyone have questions?
In nineteen eighty four, Berkeley County got more money because we were not one of the highest counties in the state. And the teachers of Berkeley County and the school employees got a supplement that at that time gave them more money than just the pay raise, just for the record.
That's great. So if you look at this, there's five hundred and thirty dollars that gets added there.
Right, well, I'm just saying that in nineteen eighty four, you had the RECT decision, as you correctly pointed out. And you had some other issues going on, but you had some counties that did not get any equity money, but Berkeley County did. And so your legislative delegation, yours truly was one of them, voted to give our local employees more money in nineteen eighty four. We never anticipated that we would be the highest property values at that time. If you had a cost of living index at that time, we were down in the bottom there. But just to give you another little historical perspective there. You have a good, you good, good presentation.
Yeah, and that's why I was trying to mention, you know, again, in nineteen eighty four, I was only four years old. So maybe in the early eighties, the cost of living was more comparative. And maybe it was to Berkeley County's advantage back in nineteen eighty four. But again, fast forward thirty six years, and you can see where something that was trying to make us equitable in nineteen eighty four now creates an inequity in twenty twenty one.
Yeah, that five hundred dollars meant a lot more back in nineteen eighty four.
Sure did. Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, thank you, Brad. So now I'd like to turn to Dr. Schoolies to talk a little bit about professional development for our service and professional staff and talk about how additional funds could be dedicated to professional development to the Department of Ed. Justin?
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, and welcome, everyone. This evening, I'll actually maybe start in backwards with the results. You've listened to Mr. Butts and Mr. Spinagel talk about things that could do to assist the county with the budget. And why that's very important is, two years ago, you as the legislators gave us a code section eighteen A four dash five A that allows the county to look at where their critical needs are and to provide supplements to our teachers in those areas. And by freeing up some of our excess levy funds that the county has with changes to the staffing formula, as you saw there, we will be able to look seriously at this code section to provide our teachers with those critical needs areas with additional supplements to be able to recruit our staff during that time. And we're taking this so seriously, working with our federal programs during the month of December and January here. We actually had an RFP out for a compensation and classification study so that we can look at it correctly to see where we should focus some of these county dollars in anticipation of access and utilizing this code section that you provided to us. So though we have the tool, we're looking for ways and instruments that allows us to be able to use that responsibly. And as Dr. Murphy said, as we're recruiting our employees with salary dollars, as we're looking there, one of the other questions that we get asked, and then once we have them on board, is what can I do professionally? Where can I go for professional development or continuing education? Because our teachers see our salary scale as an incentive to be able to continue their education. But in order to do that, the state of West Virginia has a pot of money through the Department of Education that allows teachers to get up to fifteen hours for renewals and or adding additional certification hours or certification areas to their already existing certificates. But we know the labor force, there's a high demand with a low supply. So we have to look at our substitute teachers in our local communities and trying to figure out what we can do to bring those individuals into the classrooms, our stay at home moms that are looking to get back into the workforce, how can we get them into the classrooms? So we're looking at different advantages, but they don't have the ability to access the state dollars that you have provided for tuition reimbursement because most of these individuals are seeking initial teacher certification. And the way the current code is written, only those employees that already have an existing certificate are eligible for state money for tuition reimbursement. So we think that being able to change this code section to allow for initial certification for substitutes and individuals wanting to enter education will go a long way for recruiting of new staff as well as retaining as they go through those programs for that information as they're trying to gain advanced degrees. So what we provided to you in your packet this evening is some suggested language to be able to help that code to achieve that goal.
I'm gonna stop there for just a minute. That, that, that really, those three ideas really address retention and attracting, you know, teachers and other professionals here to our area. We know, and you folks are well aware, as this area continues to grow and families move here, we are attracting, you know, a good, strong employee base, and we are competitive. However, when you look across our borders, those districts there in Maryland and Virginia are also very competitive, and they're very attractive. While we offer a number of things, benefits here, such as dental and housing allowances to try and compete, we also still have salary issues as one and staffing issues as some of the hurdles that we're still going to need to conquer. So we offer these ideas to let you know if we're gonna continue to grow and how we're gonna meet that need. That's all coupled with the, with the fact that, you know, the educational career path across our nation is changing simultaneously. So these are not unique issues that Berkeley County is facing. These are national issues. You know, in the face of the pandemic, the public education is also evolving. But we feel as we continue to grow and the need to remain competitive and benefit our students and our staff, we're gonna need some assistance here with attracting and retaining and also growing our folks. And I think these ideas this evening hopefully are kind of planting seeds for continued conversations. And they're possible solutions that you folks may wanna, you know, entertain or pursue as you go into the session. Now, we're gonna transition a little bit here to another set of ideas that we want to share with you. And those have to do with the fact our learning environments need to be safe and inclusive, and they also need to be adaptive and, you know, preparing and planning for this continual growth as we see it forecast is kind of part of the next set of solutions that we'd like to bring forward to you. This year, Berkeley County completed its Comprehensive Education Facility Plan, and we are applying to the School Building Authority for a needs project. And that needs project is gonna be focused on fourteen of our facilities as far as providing a safe entry into those facilities. But as we see, you know, our continued growth, one of the things that we've become aware of is that the School Building Authority that provides funding, you know, through the state is gonna need some additional resources as well. So as you're in this upcoming session or as you ponder this in years moving out that you consider to, you know, provide additional funding to the building authority so that they can support some of these projects. I spoke with the School Building Authority earlier this week. And while not all school districts in the state apply for needs projects, right now, to meet that need, they need over a hundred million dollars. They are receiving annually right around fifty million dollars. And so you can see that, as in the case of many of these situations, the need is not matching up with what we have available. And we are also looking at the possibility of additional projects here in the near future as we look at our student enrollment continue to grow. And the need for additional schools in our future will have us, you know, either seeking out funds from the School Building Authority and also bringing a bond forward in the community. I'm gonna have Jim Butts now speak to two additional items as far as year end financials and then funding distribution timeline. So, Jim?
Thank you again, Dr. Murphy. And again, last year, these were two items that we had discussed. These were two items that we had discussed that I think are relatively easy to probably pass in the legislature. One is section eighteen nine three eight, and that's the legal ads. In the past, we're required to run a class one legal ad to publish our year end financials. And Berkeley County, it costs us over three thousand dollars to do that. All fifty five counties are required to run that publication. And as times have changed over the years, you know, all of our year end financial statements are now available on the state auditorium's website. They're also available at any point in time for people to log into the West Virginia checkbook and look there. And then on top of that, depending on how much federal funding you receive, all county schools that have the federal funding also have their same annual audit published on the federal auditing house. So to me, it seems quite redundant to continue to publish in the local paper when the times have changed and we have multiple sources to get that information out to the public. A second one that we had talked about last year was the funding distribution timeline. And this relates to the increased enrollment. Under section eighteen nine eight fifteen, the way it's currently written, before September one of each year, the State Department of Education is required to distribute sixty percent additional money for increased enrollment based upon projections that are given. The projection methodology is also erroneous in that legislation, and it also causes us then to receive much more money than we typically receive. The last several years, what happens is that sixty percent required distribution before September one is before we do our certified student enrollment in October. is before we do our certified student enrollment in October. And then once that comes out, this code session then says by December, you have to, the State Department of Education has to true up those numbers and then disperse the remaining forty percent. Well, because the original projection is usually wrong, the state distributes money and then the counties turn around and write us a check back to the Department of Ed. So for this instance alone, this year alone, the projections gave seven counties additional funding. And when the numbers, final numbers came out in December of this year, all seven counties wrote the same exact check back, well, six of the seven wrote the same check back that they received in August, they wrote it back to the State Department of Education. I know the State Department of Education supports this, we talked about it. There's not a whole lot of counties that it impacts. And when you really look at the big picture, receiving money in December versus August doesn't really impact our budget that much. What it does is it eliminates some of the administrative processing, both on the State Department of Education side and on the school board side. So we're asking that that language in that section of code be revised to have a one-time distribution after the October second enrollment numbers are certified. Are there any questions on those two areas?
I want to get ready to stick my neck out here for a second. And I'm going to put a disclaimer on it before I do it. First of all, I got to be careful what I say nowadays since I'm the Senate President because it can be interpreted many different ways. So right now I'm speaking as Senator Craig Blair for the fifteenth senatorial district, and I better hadn't seen anything out there otherwise from that standpoint. But that said, the legal ad one of, I want to see something done with that and what I'm asking for you, if we get ready, and this isn't just a problem for you, this is a problem for municipalities, it's a problem for counties. A lot of money in the state in legal advertising. But the press, the newspapers, have a big problem with it. And anybody, I was down the bottom of the cultural center two years ago when I become the finance chairman, they might bit my head off of when I was talking about that. Are you guys willing to do a resolution of, from the Board of Education in support of this? To be able to make it so that we do something actually the legal.
Their last part broke up.
Okay, I'm turning my video off. So then hopefully the sound will come through good. Are you guys willing to do a resolution or something from the County Board of Education of requesting the legislature to do something with legal advertising?
I'll step in on this one. We might be able to do you one better. The West Virginia Association School Business Officials, all fifty-five treasurers and counties agreed that we need to remove this provision from code. And I'm sure when we meet here in early February, we have a West Virginia ASBO board meeting coming up that we could probably put together a resolution, not just from Berkeley County schools, but from all fifty-five counties.
Amen. I can't wait to see it because we need that type of ammunition to be able to protect ourselves. You guys are familiar with the public or with the press, and they buy their, buy the barrel. And we have to deal with that. Well, it's very hard to get the votes to be able to do something like this whenever they get beat up in the press for it. And it doesn't just apply to this issue. The press ends up beating you up on other issues, and lots of times the truth doesn't have anything to do with what they put in print. So we would need your support on that. I'm going to back up now again and talk about county-funded salary supplements.
Craig, Craig, can I interrupt you please?
Sure.
I see, I hear where you're coming from, but in this day and age where we're, we have a lot of people who do not use these websites to check their numbers, but they do read the newspaper and look at the numbers. And when everybody's hollering transparency, to be talking about a three thousand dollar expenditure against a two hundred and twenty million dollar budget plus, seems it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money compared to the, to the information. I, I personally would support a threshold dollar amount, but I still think that the public, a lot of people still look at the paper, they don't know how to use a computer. And I think it's, it's a small amount compared to what the public's getting. By the money speaking for one board member, so I don't want to mislead you there by ourselves.
All right, well, I'm going to, I turned the video back on for a sec. I can see my phone setting up there? Yeah, I see it. Okay. The vast majority, the people out here have phones, and they have internet connectivity to it. And the vast majority of the people, not all, have this. Now, we have a newspaper, I'm turning the video back off, we have a newspaper that has about the same readership as what it had when I was in high school with Don Dillingham. Okay, are we really hitting that amount of people? We got to go to where the masses are. And they have family, and I'm, actually, I'm not proposing to get rid of public notices. I'm proposing to do it in a different way, a lot like Google Alerts. And we are able to save every taxpayer dollars and be able to make it so that you can get it out here. And also, I'm in favor of being able to pay your taxes online, on, with your fame, renew your tags. We got to get West Virginia into the twenty-first century if we want to keep our youth here, and we want to keep our seniors here for that matter. Because once the seniors, especially the ones that's done well, have any money at all, they leave the state also to a state that doesn't tax their income. So we got to be able to change the state in that dynamic. And so we can't satisfy everybody. But what we need to do is start doing it where we can reach out to the masses to the best of our ability. Now that's, again, I'm going to qualify, quantify that with Craig Blair. The Senate President Craig Blair. I want to switch over again for the county-funded supplements. I get it, I'm with you guys on that. Your board needs to get ready and go ahead and file a lawsuit to overturn the rec decision. It needs to be done. Again, Craig Blair is talking about this. You're ready to overturn the rec decision, it will set a chain reaction in place in the state of West Virginia that's been needing to be done for quite some time so that we can go back and get this straightened out. As long as I've been in the legislature, the rec decision has been a problem. You have now demonstrated, and I'm sorry I wasn't on last year, I think I was in the hospital, but you've demonstrated here a path forward. I think the courts would be conducive to it. Hell, Judge Recht said years later afterwards that his decision wasn't the right one, but it didn't get changed. So I, I would encourage the Berkeley County Board of Education to get ready and put forth a lawsuit and overturn the rec decision. You've got a great case for it. You just demonstrated it to all the legislators that are online here tonight. I'm with you on it. But you have standing, I do not. And keep in mind, got to add one last thing. If you look at the chart there and you go down and match up the legislators to the haves and the have-nots, well, we're in a minority in the Eastern Panhandle and throughout the state. So you can't expect the legislature to be able to get something across the finish line like that and get it straightened out without having some help on your end. So the County Board of Education would do its all favor, in the state of West Virginia, in my opinion, on realigning this by following this lawsuit. I'm done.
I'll just touch on this because I know some folks need to head out the door here in just a minute. I'll just wrap up the presentation by highlighting some of the achievements of our students, which we are very proud of. Our graduation rate is extremely high, and that's a reflection of the quality of our staff, but also the students, and you can also see those that are continuing their education. We're also highlighting workforce readiness, whether through RUMSE, Career Tech, dual enrollment with some of our neighboring higher ed institutes, and then those students that are also in high school pursuing career paths. So on behalf of the board, I would just like to say thank you. Dr. Queen, I'll, I'll turn this back over to you, and if folks have questions or they want to share, as Senator Blair did, some of their thinking, we welcome that. But again, thank you for spending a few minutes with us this evening. Hopefully, we've given you some ideas and some possible solutions. But our main point here this evening is we are going to continue to grow, we're going to need to be able to address that in several ways. And by having, you know, strong service and professional folks ready to go, we will be able to carry out our job in educating kids and preparing them for their future. So back to you, Dr. Queen, at this point.
First of all, does anyone have any more comments or questions from the legislature?
Yeah, I have one question. This is, this is actually outside my expertise, so I'm kind of just listening. Somebody just give me a brief explanation of what the rec decision was. I had, I don't even know what that is. It, Craig is so adamant about overturning. Short, very short.
Dr. Schoolie, can you help with that?
I know the basics to be dangerous with this one. Again, as Brad was speaking about earlier there, it was the equity among counties at the time with what a county could afford with that excess levy. So I will actually let Brad maybe fill in some of those details.
Yeah, so the rec decision is very large. If you ever get to the document, there's a lot in it. So this eighty-four piece is kind of a carve-out of this rec decision or result of the rec decision. But basically, Rec said that the current school funding system caused financial inequities from county to county. And what that means is a lot of these smaller counties were losing teachers because they were, they're smaller counties, they don't have the tax base, they couldn't get their excess levies passed. So they were losing their teachers to the counties that had the excess levies, the ones that could add to their salary scales and pay more to the teachers. So the teachers were jumping ship, and of course, those counties were saying, hey, we can't be competitive, our quality of education is going down because we can't retain and keep our teachers. So that is where this whole eighty-four county supplement started to evolve from. And the state ultimately ended up saying, well, we're going to look at these counties that have these excess levies, and we're going to freeze them. And whatever they were paying in nineteen eighty-four up to the state equity amount, there's a threshold in there. But whatever they were paying in terms of an eighty-four county supplement, we're actually going to reduce their state equity portion by that amount, and that's what my first chart was, was trying to show everybody. So counties like Berkeley lost, lose money in terms of state funding because we have an excess levy, we had an excess levy in nineteen eighty-four. So we lose one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for a bachelor's degree in zero years. That's kind of the, the gist of how the rec decision ultimately ends up impacting the funding that counties like Berkeley receive, you know, and again, when you look at it, in theory, okay, you have poorer counties, and they have a hard time keeping teachers, so they need more funding. You know, you kind of get that ideology. But the problem is, we're thirty-six years down the road, and the cost of living index has just completely flipped on itself when you look at counties around the state. And I just showed you the chart where the Eastern Panhandle, three of the top four are counties in terms of cost of living, the most expensive places to live in West Virginia are right here in the Eastern Panhandle. So, you know, when you have that kind of inequity, when you have that kind of cost of living, and we're handcuffed, we're restrained from being able to really grow our salary scale, we can't be competitive with our real competition. Our real competition isn't other counties in the state of West Virginia. It's Maryland, it's Washington County, it's down south, it's Frederick County, Virginia, it's Loudoun County, Virginia, it's up north in Pennsylvania. We can't be competitive with the counties across the river. So that's kind of how the whole rec decision plays into our complications, our issues that we're faced with today and our inability to grow our salary scale.
Thank you.
It may be a oversimplification, but as someone who's new to the region, it's basically an equalization formula between counties, and it equalizes it based on whether the county has the excess levy or not. So perhaps it worked in eighty-four, we're in twenty twenty-one, so we're asking you guys to look at that again. And I appreciate Senator Blair's comment about possible actions that we may have to consider or that we could consider.
And Dr. Queen, if I could add one thing, I'm not sure it worked in eighty-four when it was originally, the rec decision came out. But it's actually now having the reverse effect. Counties were complaining because they couldn't keep teachers because they were going to counties that paid higher. Well, we certainly pay higher than other counties. The problem is, and we have tried, as we recruit teachers, we get, we look at areas that are losing teachers and try to recruit teachers from those areas, we can't recruit them because they can't afford to move to Berkeley County. You know, even though they would be making a slightly higher salary, the cost of living doesn't allow them to make that move.
We, we, Berkeley County, Delegate Reed, a couple of years ago, did a, a map of the state. And you could see where the contiguous counties of Virginia, Ohio, Maryland, Pennsylvania. We compared a beginning teacher and a teacher's salary and showed this and passed those out. Now, we should update that and send it to you. But that would reinforce what Mr. Spinago said. You should also realize that like the School Building Authority and some other equal, equalization factors came in. We didn't get help from the state before the rec decision. Now the SBA is one of the big driving forces in our growth and constructing of new schools.
With all due respect, Pat, of, on this, nothing says that destiny has to go away. The good things, the good aspects that would took place from the rec decision, which could still remain. What, it's time for us to hit the reset button as state across the board so that we can go back in and get schools truly funded equitably throughout the state. And that's where, why I asked this question, because somebody withstanding has to take this on. Otherwise, it's just not going to happen. And I've sat behind the scenes and talked about this for years. And I think you guys are in a perfect position to be able to do that and help us get state of West Virginia heading in the right direction.
This sheet is an excellent piece of evidence.
You'd win the case. I'd be willing to bet ten to one odds on the fact that you'd win the case. Thank you for having me on this evening, and I've learned a lot.
Well, that's why we're here to present to you our unique situation here in Berkeley County, as we say, and we continue to say we're different from all the other folks with all the growth that we're continuing to experience since nineteen eighty-three, actually. It's just amazing, and we need all the help we can get from you folks to help us be more equitable with our teachers, to be able to retain and recruit new teachers because our growth is just, is phenomenal. And losing teachers is a very difficult thing we have to keep up with, and getting people to come here to Berkeley County is equally as difficult as new teachers because we just can't start them as they, as much money as they can make in other places. We do provide good benefits, but it's difficult to, for those young kids to differentiate the salary that's there. So we hope we've offered some good information for you all to take back. We appreciate all of your comments and, and listening to us tonight to the difficulties that we're having here. This is a great county. It's a wonderful county to live in, and we have a great school system, but we just need your help helping us with this growth more than anything.
Could I ask one more question of the legislators? And this would be with Mr. Delly's assistance as well. In the past, we've, the school board has asked that the legislature look, along with help from the State Department, the actual cost of different categories of special ed students. the actual cost of different categories of special ed students. The autistic child is the highest intensive labor one. Mr. Deli, would you agree with that?
Yes, I would. That's.
Okay. And we just, I mean, not during this session, but an interim study. If you would check out county by county, the, the profile of the special ed students. And this dovetails with what you saw on the slide there that Mr. Butts and Mr. Spanago did. If you would just do an item analysis of what it costs a county provides students per category, speech, other areas. And to see what your effort is, what our effort is compared to what the actual cost is. I think that would also illuminate that one chart that you saw, ten million dollars that we've seen increase over ten years.
Anyone else have any comments from the legislature?
Thank you guys for your presentation. I guess some of the stuff I probably already kind of knew, but looking at the numbers and all gives me real appreciation to what some of the problems are for, for the school board, I guess. And I just want to thank you for the presentation. I think it was a job done well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill, I'm going to weigh in again on what Pat was talking about.
Okay, Greg.
And I think that we're going to see something this year on, on the special needs of, and it's going to be ESAs. The ESAs would go a long ways and be able to help unplug students that are in your school system right now that would want to go somewhere else and actually get them out. We've had a lot of discussions about this and we're going to see ESA legislation this year. And that's going to benefit you primarily in that category, what Pat was just talking about. So and that's our intent for that. So I just wanted to throw that out there for you.
And I just want everyone to know that we have nineteen thousand, two hundred and some students in this county and we have more than four thousand special needs children, students here. So that's a big portion of our student enrollment that we really, is costing us more than we can afford. But we have to do that because these kids need everything we can possibly give them. And we know that people move here because we have such good special needs services for their children. So again, any other questions or comments?
Just one point of clarification for our legislators, especially new ones. The school aid formula does not distinguish between a special needs student and a regular ed student. School aid formula says a student's a student. And what we have proposed to you here tonight is to look at or create two categories, a category for regular ed and a category for special ed and create ratios based on those categories. That's kind of the summary of what Mr. Butts went over this evening. And if we can do that, well, that will help not only fund special education, but free up some of our local tax dollars. And then we may be able to go back to our salary scale and start building that money into our salary, into our salaries.
Great point, Brad. Thank you. Anyone else? We thank all of you for being here tonight. We appreciate your time. We appreciate you listening. And we hope you take this back to Charleston with you because we certainly could do need your cooperation, your help going forward. So thank you so much. Don't ever hesitate to contact us through the website or most of you have my number. But if you need anything at all from us, please let us know. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Second.
Have a motion when Mr. Murphy is seconded by Mr. Beckwith to adjourn. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.